It's so weird for me if I know.
Yeah. Obviously looking to my left for you.
You guys need some. I tried to pick you more in the middle, but it's.
I should over normally sitting, he's always to my left. So it's just a little disorienting. Good for me. Keeps me on my toes.
Second. Yeah. Really for you. Just say random thing.
I'll just wait until you guys.
Okay. All right, I will go ahead and call. It is Monday, May 12th. We will start. Next, or the first item on the agenda is for visitors. This is for visitors that have comment not pertaining to night agenda item. So if you have any comments not pertaining to today's agenda item, you can fill out a form and pass it along to them. And I will check online. If you're online, you can raise your hand. We am not seeing anyone. So we will go ahead and move on to item number two, which is the quasi judicial public hearing. This is a continuation of PLDR 2024 O two, one, three proposal for a second detached, single unit dwelling in the waterway overlay zone at six, five, nine Northwest Silver Buckle. Gonna turn to Aaron or Ian, sorry.
Ian, my head's around the city attorney, I'm gonna do a little preface to this. So this is a quasi judicial application. A couple of things that means is that both the applicant and anybody else who's interested have clearly defined rights on participation and how they participate. Uh, that means that a quasi judicial application like this one has a really defined record. And so the decision that the planning commission has to make or will be making is limited to what is in that. We held a public hearing, the April 14th meeting, all the testimony of that is presented at the public hearing. Everything that had come into the city prior to the public hearing and for a limited period after the public hearing on April 14th, because the record was held open and the hearing was continued, all of that information, opinions, facts, arguments, thoughts, all of it. That's all in the record for the quasi judicial uh application that the planning commission is going to be deciding tonight. The record for this case, the application closed on, Aaron, what was the last day the record was opened?
May 5th.
May 5th. Thank you. So as of May 5th, the record is closed. That means that this is, this is the way the state law and our code governs these kind of applications. There can't be any new information, argument, evidence submitted to the record. The record is closed as of May 5th. So that means a couple of things. Um, that means that I'm going to talk to the planning commissioners about whether anything has changed for them in terms of whether they've had any additional ex parte contacts or site visits um since the April 14th public hearing when they all, I think, said they hadn't. So I'm going to ask them that in a second. And then the next thing that's going to happen is the planning commission is going to deliberate, hopefully towards a decision on the application based on everything that's in the record. Um, that record closed on May 5th. There was a question before we started the meeting from the audience about whether you could ask questions. And and really the answer is no. Um, and that's in part because the planning commission, their job legally is to make a decision based on what's in the record. And for better or worse, quasi judicial land use applications, they're not, they're not really set up to be the type of process where people get to ask questions. I mean, if you have questions, when an application is underway, it's always good and fair to direct that to the planner who's working on it, which in this case is Aaron. Um, but the record closed on on May 5th, so it's really not possible unless for some reason the decision maker, planning commission tonight decides to reopen the record. Um, that's kind of a a game time decision. I don't anticipate that happening tonight. But unless the record's reopened, it's closed. And so all we're going to do tonight is get, I think, maybe a brief update from Aaron and a little bit of information from me. And then I think staff, to the extent planning commission needs it, are going to try to help get them through their deliberations so they make a decision. So that's, that's what happens tonight. It feels a little bit limiting, I think, to people sometimes, and I apologize for that, but it's the way, it's the way the law is set up for these things to work. And it's so that the decision makers are making a decision on a a defined record where everybody can have access to the same information. And so records closed, so that's sort of good news, bad news. Um, next thing I'm going to do is ask landing commissioners, that you all had an opportunity eh eh at the April 14th public hearing to declare, one, whether you had uh experienced any ex parte contacts, any contacts outside of the record. And two, whether there are any conflicts or other issues that would prevent you from rendering an impartial decision and looking at the criteria in the code. Um, so I'm not going to ask you to all go through that again, because that's all in the record for the April 14th hearing. But I'm going to ask, give everybody an opportunity to let us know if anything's changed. Has anything changed about your ability to render an impartial decision? And has anything changed in terms of any additional ex parte contacts occurring since the April four, between the April 14th hearing and today?
Even if we went to the site again?
If you went to the site again, you should, you should talk about it now and just, just declare it. It's, it's not a bad thing to have a site visit. It just needs to be, it just needs to be, I'll say in the record and the record's closed, but if you've had a site visit, I'd rather you declare it here.
Yes, I visited the site again.
Okay.
Since the here.
Okay.
I do have a communication that's not included in the record. Uh, someone ran me down in the Costco parking lot. Um, they gave me what I will call a anecdotal characterization of the applicant. Um, it is not something that is going to be changing my impartiality.
Okay.
For this, but I do feel that I need to discuss.
So this was contact that you certainly didn't solicit. It just sprung upon you?
Yes.
Okay.
It was very.
Okay. Would it, would it be fair to say that you didn't engage the person in discussion to say you could avoid it?
Less than 30 seconds and I didn't want to say anything.
Okay. Does it impact your ability to analyze the facts and the criteria tonight?
No.
Okay. Anything else?
I just want to say I was not at the April 14th hearing.
Okay.
But I have, um, I listened to the entire recording from the meeting and have gone through all the records and the documents, so I'm up to date.
Okay, so prepare to participate.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, eh eh, any, anything else from any planning commission members, any site visits, any contacts solicited or otherwise? And to be clear, you can't stop somebody from running up to an possible parking lot. Sometimes it run away, maybe it seemed coming. Or those, yeah. Right. And and site, site visits are are not inherently bad. They just, they just need to be put on, so people.
Um, okay. Nathan, how did they recognize you?
You know, I'm basically invisible.
Okay. And and the reason we're doing this is just so, so we can hopefully make it clear that the planning commission and planning commissioners are ready to sort of pick this up and deliberate tonight and that nothing additional has sort of come into the mix um in terms of information or expert context. Sounds like that's the case. Um, I'm going to look over and see if anybody looks like they want to challenge any of the sort of reaffirmations that no one has any conflicts. I'm not seeing anyone interested in that. And there weren't any challenges in the first place. I said there were no questions, but if you have a question about this particular aspect.
No, it's basically about um people speaking into the microphone and being able to hear.
Like, like me doing this. Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully you folks are wonderful hearing people. There are those of us who do have hearing aids and it doesn't, doesn't quite translate.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for that reminder.
Backing into the microphones would really help me and I'm sure it would probably help other people who wear hearing aids.
Uh, understood, appreciated. I have a habit of turning this away so no one can hear me. I'll, I'll, I'll do better. Okay.
The video.
Well, yeah, but then people like me with bad eyesight. Okay. So, so thank you for that. So with, with that, and the next step is to turn this over to the, the chair and vice chair to, to lead deliberations. Um, or maybe Aaron, I, maybe you had a prelude, I think.
I think we have staff comments.
Yeah, not, not much. I mean.
Okay.
But uh, yeah, if you are done.
I, I can be done.
All right, I will, the next item would be staff comments. So if there's anything you want to add, Aaron.
Yeah, just uh, a little bit of a recap. Um, we had the hearing on April 14th. Um, the uh, first round of comments were, were due um, a week later on April 21st. Uh, comments in response to that were due by April 28th. Um, at which point the record closed to everyone but the applicant. The applicant's final argument was submitted on May 5th. Um, some of the main topics that were covered in that open record period included stormwater, fire code. Um, uh, the setback uh requirements from, from the river, not only the design review setback. Um, but the repairing corridor boundary. Um, as well as um uh, further clarification and testimony regarding vehicle, vehicle access um to uh, not only to the subdivision in and out of the subdivision, but um from uh Silver Buckle to the actual side of the home as well. Um, and um, yeah, there were comments on uh, uh, on both pro and con on these items. And if you have any questions about any of that testimony, we uh are available to help answer those questions, but um, yeah, no new um information is to be put into the record.
Can I ask a quick question of you guys?
Yeah.
Um, is there space for community or questions of staff at this point or?
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, I, this is the, the record, so, and this is, we can work through this. The record's closed. So um, if commissioners have questions that get deeper and more extensive, if it starts feeling like staff is presenting or re-presenting, I'm going to talk to you about whether it feels like you should be reopening the record. Um, if you're asking clarifying questions, especially about things that are in the record or staff's, staff explaining something that's in the record, I think those questions are okay during deliberations to help you deliberate. And there's, there's no, to me, there's not always a super clear line between, between that. But if it starts to feel like this is additional information, then we're going to have to take a timeout and think about whether that's the right way to go. But clarifying questions about things that are already in the record to help deliberation, I think that's fair game.
Okay. And if it helps to guide your discussion, I can throw up the site plan on the screen or the floor plans, the landscape plan, things of that sort.
Hey, Aaron, do you have a slide with the, the criteria or maybe multiple slides with a criteria?
Um, yeah, I have the PowerPoint presentation from a month ago that has those spread out over a few slides.
I, I think maybe, maybe starting with that available. And again, this is a presentation that was, it's already in the record, so I think it's okay. That might be a reminder for the planning commission about what, you know, what are the, what are the factors that you're supposed to be considering here? So having those handy, if not up, would be good.
Okay. Say the word and I can do that.
Go, Aaron, my turn to do that.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna run through this. I'm gonna try and do it a little more organized. Um, so John, if you have any clarifying questions for Aaron, go ahead and ask him.
The one I have is obviously having trouble relocating landscape plan.
Okay.
And uh, since the site plan was hard to read, where were the driveway and all that? So if you could put that up, it's, if it's clarified with colors and where things are, that was.
Sure. Yeah, I think it, yeah, that'd be all. Okay. Um, well, um, these are just the main sections of, that are uh, the approval criteria. Um, 2.7.610 um, has the pre-removal criteria in there. Um, 2.6 point, uh, 0.620 uh, has all the repairing corridor rules and regulations. Point 630 um, has the area of special interest subzone approval criteria. What's 640, the floodplain and point 650, all of the design review standards. Um, and if you uh, as you, if you want to go through those in order or pop around, we, we can pull up um more detailed um summaries of the criteria in each of those sections of the code. Um, the, and we can, I mean, keep going if you, because we just got to.
Okay, yeah, if you don't mind pulling up the landscape plan.
Uh, I've got that here.
And that's.
That's my only question.
Bob, do you have any clarifying questions?
Um, not so much. Uh. Well, I, I do have a, an overarching question for Ian, and it has to do with uh, 2.7.650, which is the um bend development code to shoots river corridor, design review, combining zone. And it has to do with uh, related uh edicts from the state. So within the bend development code, there are certain things that are clear and objective. There are certain things that are discretionary. I assume that this planning commission should look at this per the bend development code, not to shoots, not city, not federal, not intergalactic.
I would never suggest that we ignore our intergalactic masters. Be dangerous. Um, yeah, I, I mean, if, if I, and let's keep talking to make sure I understand the question. But um, yeah, the, the, the criteria or the factors that you are, I'd say, charged to apply and some would say allowed to apply are those in the bend development code. Sometimes uh, some, some cities call that a zoning code. Sometimes the development code or the zoning code will pull in standards from other places. Um, and so that's a way that some of those intergalactic or other standards can, can become relevant, but, but they are the standards in the development code. That is what you are applying.
Okay.
Yeah. And that, that's what an applicant needs to show they can meet. And that's what somebody who is opposing an application should be trying to show are not met. The standards in the, the development code or the zoning code that apply to that particular application, which that's what the staff report does. And the recommendation is that out, in large part outlines and identifies what those criteria are and whether, based on the information in the record, staff think they're met or not.
And Ian, you probably would like to add that standards that are in our development code that are not clear and objective under state law cannot be used as the basis for denying an application for housing. So that is, um, it's unique to application for housing. Um, I don't know if Ian wants to add anymore.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's Oregon, it has different names. It's sometimes called the needed housing statute. And this is a requirement in Oregon law that now essentially applies to all housing. All housing is needed housing. And uh, standards and procedures and criteria that apply to the development of housing have to be clear and objective. They can't be subjective. They can't be unclear. And what that has largely done, largely, is get rid of what used to be called compatibility standards, because things like that that were inherently subjective or squishy could be used or manipulated to prevent applications from proceeding. And so state has decided through state law that that isn't really an effective way to build a state and meet our housing goals. So standards that are, criteria that apply to housing applications need to be clear and objective. Now, I will say, Bend uh is not alone in having some sort of um, I'll say, res- uh residual standards in various places in our development code that could be applied to housing that aren't as clear and objective as they could be. So Bend, like a lot of cities, is identifying those things going forward. And sometimes a, an applicant for development will come in and say, this is a housing application. You can't apply criterion C because it's not clear and objective. So that is something an applicant will sometimes raise.
If, if there is a section that is subjective, we think it's material. Can we rule based on that? Or is your advice that anything that um, is other than clear and objective should be irrelevant in, in our?
Hmm, I would say that, and this is hypothetical. I'm not sure if you're thinking about a particular criterion. It's fine if you are. But if there is a criterion that applies to an application and an applicant or somebody else is saying or thinking about saying, it's not clear and objective. Um, you shouldn't apply it or you can't apply it. But there's information and evidence in the record where staff are saying, yeah, but it's met. Um, I'd say it's not really important for the planning commission to decide whether it's clear and objective or whether it is not met. Is that, or whether it could be applied? Is that the question?
Give me an example, not specific to the.
What about the, the tree from the, the other one?
Yeah.
It's not clear and objective in the code, whether or not we should say you have to, you, you can remove the tree or not remove the tree or using subjectivity on that.
But.
We're not preventing housing though.
Correct, correct. So Bob, I want to make sure I'm answering your question.
That was very helpful. Yes, you are.
I mean, I, I don't, I will say, I don't think it's the planning commission's job necessarily to, to determine whether a particular criterion is clear and objective. Um, especially if there's information in the record indicating that it can be met, because it's usually the applicant that is going to raise this and saying, I don't have to meet this one because it's not clear and objective. If they meet it, then they meet it.
It's actually the core, it's the flip.
I wondered if it would be the opposite. Yeah. So what's, what's your, what's your scenario?
Um. Well, it, it does have to do with compatibility.
Okay. Surprise, unsurprisingly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I clarify with Ian?
Yeah.
Um, on that note, so who's saying it's clear and objective?
I'm, I'm waiting for the punchline.
Not, not for mine. About, I'm saying for anybody. Oh, someone says that's clear and objective and someone else says, no, it's not.
It is typically, and speaking hypothetically now about this application, we'll probably get there, but it's typically an applicant that says that particular criterion, I don't think it's clear and objective. Uh, I don't have to meet it. You can't apply it. I'm not going to provide you information indicating that I've met it because I don't need to, because this is an application for housing and you can't apply that particular criterion to me. So it's typically an applicant that is making that argument or pointing it out.
Their opinion with professionals or not, but it's their opinion.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that clarified for me.
So to resolve it, would you suggest that individuals or, or this group um, apply the code as it stands, not try to interpret, is it clear and objective? And if there's um, a difference of opinion from the applicant, then they take it to an authority like Luba to.
Uh, if an applicant, if an application is denied, and hypothetically, if an application is denied and an applicant thinks it was denied in whole or in part based on app, application of a criterion that is not clear and objective, it is the applicant's rights. And probably anybody would suggest to them that they take it to the next level, which is, which is Luba. Yeah, that's what, that's what applicants do when they have, when they have applications denied and they don't agree with the basis for the denial.
I thought it's hearing officer next.
Uh, yeah, the next level, wherever it is. I mean, whether it's hearings officer, Luba, it used to be potentially city council, whatever the next level of appeal is, depending on the application.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Do you want to, did you have any questions on the landscape plan?
No, I think for using it for reference, it's easier to see a colored drawing, that, that kind of fuzzy thing that they have.
Um, I have no questions, Bob.
Yeah, is this in the uh Rimrock subdivision? That's, to be honest, that's kind of a, a big one. I'm seeing conflicting things and it looks like it was, was it when it was originally platted, it was to the.
There are a couple of maps in the record that I can point to and um, you can discuss them. Um, one, um, so I'm gonna.
I can pull it up.
Yeah, I think kind of a, a, an overview of, of a lot of what we received, because a lot of the stuff, this was, you know, new information uh that we got. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, and it's like to just add my question to this because it's basically the same. Um, is it staff's understanding that when we say the southern boundary of the Rimrock West subdivision, that that is north of Archie Briggs Road?
Um, okay. This is, this is one map that may help. Um, the yellow uh is lots four and five of Rimrock West. Um, the, the south portion of this, south half of this property um, is not in the Rimrock West subdivision in terms of what was originally platted um, many decades ago. Um, the, there's a um, another map that I can put up that maybe shows a small.
Aaron, before you go off of that, can I just point out, so there's three phases to the Rimrock West subdivision. So this property is in phase one.
Right.
But if you look to the bottom left corner of this map, you see phase two.
Yeah.
That continues south of Archie Briggs Road. And so that is what we consider the southern boundary of the Rimrock West subdivision.
Would, in whichever way you interpret it, if you just interpreted it as the southern boundary of Rimrock West Phase One, that follows the south edge of Archie Briggs Road. Um, later, when Rimrock West Phase Two was platted, it in, it took in a area that is south of Archie Briggs Road uh and goes upstream a little ways from there.
Does that adequately answer your question? Should you want to see more?
And it goes to the middle of the river?
Actually.
This property goes to the middle of the river.
Hey, I was gonna ask if we could just read like the legal descriptions and look at them on the map simultaneously. Um, like, okay, for example, that.
Are you looking for the WAS setback specific to this property? You want us to read that out?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that is the correct.
Um, that was in the staff report?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Page 15.
The, the west bank, north of the park district property known as Bloom Park to the southern boundary of the Rimrock West subdivision.
It, yeah, in that section, there is a 100 foot setback. Um, the um, once you reach the Rimrock West subdivision on the west bank, it, that it, that falls in other areas. And those other areas have a 40 foot setback.
So if you kind of zoom out again, so what you're saying then is the southern end of phase two.
Yeah.
If you were to basically that, right there.
Right.
That's the.
That's where the setback.
That where, that where the, 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 yeah, setbacks from the WAS is.
Yeah, drops from 100 feet to 40 feet.
Well, and I think, yeah, I think it's, yes, I think that's staff's best conclusion. Yes. But even if, even if you, even if you were only going on phase one, it'd still be south of the subject property. Okay.
And a follow up would then be in this subdivision, the total subdivision, does that have the approved 39 units? Or is it the, the section north of Archie Briggs? Um, that. Flat and all that. Well, regardless, it's um, that number exceeds 30. Well, what I'm trying to get at is, you know, subdivision as a whole, now the two really separate times, where, where are the 39? Both apply. This gets confusing because Rimrock West Phase Two straddles Archie Briggs. And so the lots in phase two that are north of Archie Briggs, they only have that one point of access. There's lots that are south of Archie Briggs that wouldn't be included in um, the uh, the fire code maximum.
I can answer that.
Sorry.
Well, well, this is my, Ian question. I'm, I'm getting at not the fire question, which is another question on my list. But the total 39 units that were approved in the subdivision, no matter if they were having Lincoln prove it or whoever did it. Yeah. How do you go past that? And I know we've got this state law telling us anything go anywhere, which goes against most planning uh principles. Can we talk about that? Was it 39 in 39 states? Because that was approved by our city council and our planning commission or? It's really irrelevant because um, fire code is not an approval criterion.
And this, this would be a great time to shift towards focusing on the criteria that apply to this application eventually.
No, this wasn't fire code. This was allowing another unit over a planned subdivision that was approved by our.
That's not an approval criteria.
Happens all the time.
Yeah.
All right. So somebody could be approved whenever and it could be 200 units and someone comes in and wants to put 10 more in there somewhere.
Based on the criteria, the standards and criteria in, in place at that time that apply to that application in the future, sure, those, those get approved all the time. Yeah. Things are, things are not set in stone, better or worse.
So planning commission can approve something even if the HOA says no. It's essentially.
But planning, planning commission, not just this planning commission, but all, all of them, in my opinion, they're applying the criteria in the code that they are responsible for applying. And that has uh, almost never does that have anything to do with any CCRs or HOA rules. That's simply not the world that the planning commission operates in, any planning commission.
But, but I'll still do clarification.
But but I'll still do clarification, no matter what it was, what commission it was, if we approve seven, six units. And then a year or two, ten comes later and someone wants to do it, the only way they can do it is because of the new state statute. You can't go back to a plan develop, a a planned unit development.
Well, that would be a different applic- that would be a subdivision application or a partition. And that's not the case here, that.
Aren't they going against the original approved subdivision of thirty nine units?
Uh, no, no, no. I mean, I mean, things are not set in stone, right? Goalposts change, standards change, I mean, something can be approved. Let's say something is approved in nineteen ninety hypothetically. Um, maybe it's approved at the maximum allowable density or the 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 maximum number of units that can be approved under the law at that time. And that gets approved and it's, it's a hundred units. And at that point, somebody builds a hundred units because that's, that's all they can build, that's the approval. Ten years later, twenty years later, fifty years later, the law changes, development code changes, this is actually, you can start subdividing and uh, you can, you can, you can get additional units in there. And somebody applies for approval under those standards in place at the time, ten or twenty or fifty years down the road. That's how things work. Yeah, that is what happens.
They were approved at this density, not they, but a subdivision with uh this zoning above it or below it whenever it started.
Yep.
And then we're coming along, we couldn't break that approval unless the state statute HB two thousand one says you could put four units in it.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it is probably short sighted to put this in the HB two thousand one box. That is, things change all the time in development and zoning. And not just HB two thousand one, development codes can change because communities decide they want to change locally. You know, where the city Ben, like a lot of other cities in Oregon, has, over the last five plus years, been spending a lot of time responding to changes coming from the state legislature, right, for sure, including House Bill two thousand one. That's not the only way this happens. You know, communities can decide on their own that they want things to change. So there are myriad ways that things can evolve.
Southern, we do a new change in our code, our comprehensive plan that says now it's our three, it's our four, whatever.
No, no, that's, that's not the issue here. Yeah, that's not the issue here.
Um, this map that I have up is um with the dark dash line shows the um boundary between the Rimrock West subdivision and the uh, red crosshatch area that was added to lots four and five through a property line adjustment in nineteen ninety six. Uh, this is also in the record and may help. It shows the the uh private way uh and driveway configurations for the existing residences that share that private way. Um, and I know that's been um confusing to many as well.
So this was, I guess this maybe goes back, ties in with my previous question. So it's in the subdivision, but it wasn't within the HOA boundary?
The area, the red crosshatching was added to lots four and five through a property line adjustment. And in the city's eyes, that is a legal lot of record. Um, it's one unit of land. Um, the applicant's testimony is that um, although they did this property line adjustment and consolidies, consolidated these for tax law purposes, um, that they did not uh go through the steps to um consolidate it in the eyes of the homeowners association. There uh, they provided testimony uh that there are additional steps that would have needed to have been taken to do that, that they did not do.
So I guess that's where I was, because there's this uh Luba. This Luba case and it, and it talks about essentially when you do that, that it, that additional property automatically gets added. And so this is, I mean, this is one of those things where it's like, I'm not.
Yeah.
An attorney.
Right.
We, we have, yeah, we have two different uh stories on that.
Now granted, it it is, I mean, I, and maybe I'm, I'm gonna be off really quick and then we're gonna bring it right back. As far as fire code and storm water code, it's not planning commission job. They, that, we don't want planning commissioners doing fire code, we want fire chief doing fire code. We don't want fire chief doing planning kind of thing, and that's why we have segmented.
Difference of opinion on that one.
That's not in our purview.
That's not, it's, yeah, you can have a different opinion, it's, but the, that, we, we, there are different departments. We're not managing storm water, you know, it has to go through that, it has to go through fire. And even the HOA, I, I, as a planning commissioner, I can't say that, no, we're not gonna allow two houses on one property because HOA doesn't allow it. Development code allows it, HOA can stop it. It's, everyone has their own, like, like criteria, I guess.
Like, we're not approving the building permits. The HOA, they, it's, that happens after what we're doing. We're looking at the land use of adding this second unit and making sure it meets the land use code.
Yeah. When we do a building to get a permit, we, you know, building departments, like, they defer to the fire chief for things. They don't tell us that we have to do this. There are certain things that are in the building code that they review, but. So I guess, I mean, whether or not it's in the HOA for me, it doesn't matter.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't think that, it, it's pretty clear that the fire code, the.
Sorry, I'm wondering if maybe we should, this might be moving into deliberation a bit. Uh, so let's continue for comments. Sorry, Nathan, I didn't mean to. Um, we'll put a pin in it. Suzanne, Scott, did you have any more questions?
Um, no, I think I'm, I think I'm, I'm still murky on whether or not it's in the HOA, but it, that, that doesn't.
Yeah, that, uh, so I had asked for the maps because I was trying to understand. And it sounds, I don't know the timing of where the s- the so, the, uh, what was it, the northern boundary of the subdivisions for the WAS, right? Because this is all about the waterway overlay zone and the description of where the waterway overlay zone applies. And so we come to that southern boundary of Rimrock West subdivision. And I don't know when this was written and what the southern boundary of the subdivision was at the time that this was written, right? Because you're saying there was a, another addition that came in that maybe moved it further south. The phase three.
Phase two was also in place before this.
Before the land use laws were into.
Before this uh WAS standard.
So then, um, the, the map, though, shows one lot. And I don't understand, I can have one lot that's in a subdivision and not in a subdivision in the same.
Yeah, this property again is, it's uh two platted lots plus uh nearly an equal amount of land uh that was added from a par- property that straddled the river.
Yep, I, I got that part of the story, but there's one tax lot now.
One tax lot, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, but that didn't change the boundary of the subdivision.
Okay. And so it's not in the subdivision, but the subdivision goes all the way around it. But it gets, it gets excluded from the waterway overlay zone because there was a part where the boundary is below.
This, this land is subject to the waterway overlay zone, but in this location, the setback is forty feet.
Expect, as opposed to a hundred feet. So if it wasn't in the subdivision, it would be a hundred feet.
If it were upstream of the Rimrock West subdivision, th- there would be a hundred foot setback.
Okay. And then buildings that are there that are built closer to the river than the forty feet? Or just grand.
Those were built before the setbacks were imposed.
Okay.
And I, yeah, I suspect that the forty foot setback was established for this subdivision because many of the lots were already all developed and and didn't come anywhere close to meeting that hundred foot setback. So there's a kind of recognition that um
Okay.
That was the established um character of this neighborhood, if you will.
My other question was the storm water, and I'm not a storm water person, but that is one of the criteria that we're required to make a review on. And I think the staff's recommendation was just that we request that that be addressed before the final approval, is that?
It's a condition of approval, that it be.
Yeah, we're, you, you may wish to fine tune that condition, but it is one of the recommended conditions.
This seems just from my Suzanne, like from a developer side, this is like pretty common, like in a land use application, we're required to, there's like multi levels of what we do for like a subdivision. So we do like a, essentially a prelim storm water analysis and report. And then that is not permissible. And then when we go in to do our public works permits, then we have to submit a final storm water report, which is where they do, I mean, they've done onsite infiltration testing, they've done all the things. And they'll have designed a storm water system that'll get reviewed by city to make sure it's without type of setbacks and is feasible. And that's kind of what I think condition three is saying is that as part of the building permit, storm water will be addressed by the civil, the city civil engineers.
Margaret, can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
Hey, okay, that, that was actually right into one of my questions. You know, this that said, they had used um oh, I mean, they, they'd taken numbers, but they didn't uh for, for um infiltration, they'd taken estimates or but they didn't look to me like they were, had actually done a infiltration test to demonstrate what it actually would be, and from what you're saying, when you finish, so, so, which, okay, well, first, am I correct on that? I didn't see in it, I didn't think.
Yeah, so, no, there has not been an infiltration test done. Um, the uh evidence in the record, the testimony in the record from the applicant's engineer uh said that, that, that they concede that uh this is an area that probably has a very low infiltration rate, but that they um had um designed accordingly. Um, and that additional uh refinements to their drainage plan could be made to address that by storing the entire design volume rather than relying upon um in- infiltrating. So um that was, that was basically the testimony there.
So, so a follow up on, on that, so there was uh correspondence between um the engineer hired by the applicant and someone in the city regarding.
Yeah.
Different alternatives, and nothing seemed conclusive from my reading.
Yeah, I mean, there were also questions raised by opponents directed at city staff, city engineering staff uh that, that did their best to respond to those uh questions and concerns, and that's in the record.
So um, in your view, Aaron, did it seem that you have confidence that on that site the water can be retained on site, given all the different stuff, because there was nothing definitive that I can see where they said, oh, yeah, you're right. Proposal A, whoops, probably wouldn't work, and then they said B or C. And there've been questions about B and C.
Yeah. Be, uh, again, the applicant has offered several alternatives that uh they could pivot and and make refinements to the design that's been submitted. The applicant's final argument uh even goes to, so far as to suggest uh a, adding a uh some uh language to condition three that um the, their storm water system will um be located no closer than fifty feet to the ordinary high watermark, which is the repairing quarter boundary, the repairing quarter setback. Um, so you could add uh and refine condition three to include safeguards like that. So that um we can ensure that those standards are met.
So if I hear you correctly, you're suggesting that one option would be for the planning commission as a condition of approval state that this needs to be sorted out.
But um, it would need to be more.
Then here, yeah.
Yeah.
If you look at the report, it says plans submitted for the building permit review must be designed to retain all storm water drainage on site and all new storm water drain water facilities must comply with applicable state and federal regulate regulatory requirements.
And you could add and.
He's saying we have, like, we, we have a right as a planning commission to suggest an amendment to that condition of approval. And that's what he's saying.
Yeah, no, these are, the condition is written, I mean, this is a uh, it couldn't be more standard. I mean, these are standard requirements. It's, it's essentially simply stating requirements that already exist, but it's conditions that are intended to ensure compliance, including with things that come later. Um, those are generally valid conditions, so it's, this is not unusual to have this condition.
And this will be fine tuned through the building permit process with the consulting civil engineer and the city civil engineer on what is feasible. Because ultimately, the city engineer will approve or disapprove a storm water design based on the, I mean, there are so many maps and records of soil types, and that's how they build their requirements or storm water infiltration rates, and I could go into that, but that's my job. It's not my job at the.
It's to retain storm water on site, and they did, they proposed an infiltration trench uh to uh capture and collect uh the roof runoff primarily, which is and they did calculations and uh to show that the volume was uh adequate, uh the storage volume, et cetera.
Thank you. Nope, that was it. Nathan?
I have no questions.
Aaron?
Good.
Okay. All right, next, we will, I think we're good, Aaron. We're gonna go ahead and move into deliberation. And Don, we'll start with you. Do you have anything you want to deliberate? And then we'll, also, once you bring something up, I will check to see if anyone else wants to talk about it, and we'll move through it that way.
Okay, I've got a list. So the first thing that I've had a problem with this, and not to say this is the only thing, but the incomplete application. The applicant did not make it easy on us, it did not make it easy on staff, and it did not make it easy on our citizens to find out who's on first, where is the property lies, and still trying to find the driveway on the original site plan, just as one thing. Um, the lack of specificity, the lack of trying to help us make these decisions really bothered me. And so even with the thirty nine approved in the subdivision, unless the actual new zoning, new comp plan says it can go over and above because we're changing things for housing, I see that as an approved plan of thirty nine, but then it comes back to the state legislature trying to do local city planning and say we can do whatever we want on these sites of the four, so that was a concern. My next thing is solid way, or the storm water management. On one hand, we're told, don't touch it, don't go near it, because it's gonna come later with staff, the engineering.
And I'm gonna stop you, um, for, you're going into all of them, so we're gonna start, go one by one.
All right.
Does anyone have an issue with application being complete or incomplete?
I mean, I would like to have seen it a little more complete and have the, the whole um question of whether or not it's in the
Subdivision.
Subdivision should have been figured out beforehand and clearly, um, I guess presented to us, but that's.
Okay, all right. Next one, storm water management. Now, I have been involved in a lot of these on that side of the table and on this side of the table where storm water management is a key issue. And we don't wait till the engineer comes back and tells us, oh, it's okay, because we figured it all out. Especially in this case, when you have a tight site, steep slope, granite and bedrock and everything else on there, and we are said, just punting, we're, we're hope it's gonna work out. To me, this one affects the actual site plan. Where can that building go? And I think if I got, if you, uh, as you were talking about that condition there, if the engineer says, no, we gotta do it over here and move the footprint, they gotta come back to us, is that correct? If, if the applicant has to do something more radical on the site to uh, uh, address storm water, I think they gotta come back through us again.
If they have to move the structure.
The structure.
Yes, if it goes out of the approval from.
Plan. Yeah, a little here and there, I get that. We're very flexible, we let people move a tree or whatever overall. So to me, this affects the actual site plan. So I'm having problems with that right out of the box. And I did not appreciate the engineer getting up on the table and putting the map on the table, and he's just flinging his hand around, and we didn't see the map, and see what he was pointing to, we didn't see the side. I just, by going back through everything, I found where the vault is, which is right up against the house. And it doesn't seem to be a lot of room to move that thing around. Oh, we'll try this one, we'll try this one. The bigger thing also for me is I didn't see anything and maybe I didn't read it enough for geologic evaluation in this situation. You don't have to do it everywhere, but when you're on a fifteen foot at least cliff with those bluffs. With those bluffs. And we're gonna start pounding foundations in there and then also pound the vault. I'm not sure.
I'm gonna.
That works.
Stormwater, does any one, I mean, we'll talk about stormwater. So if anyone would like to discuss that.
Well, I guess the question is, at what point do we say that's enough for us as the planning commission?
Right.
I think. For me, it's the condition of approval is that like they. Will figure out a location and a method that works.
Yeah.
Once again, it's similar to fire, it's similar to the HOA issue. We are not civil engineers.
Right.
We don't approve that. They're saying there's space right now preliminarily. Under the land use and that can move. I mean, this happens for me all the time on applications in city. We say stormwater could work here. When the builder goes in to do their plan, the city will say, hmm, not so much. And so then the builder works with the city on their site plans on the location.
I I guess so. So I I have an issue with this and because this is in the WAS, right? Reason that we're here tonight is that it isn't just some house out in wherever.
Right.
This is a sensitive site. It's tight. The there, the engineer of the applicant. Basically admitted. His initial design, whoops. Wouldn't work. How about B? How about C? So moving the site and I have been involved, whereas there's been hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage. Because storm drains weren't constructed properly on a slope. It was not.
That's not part of our application?
Yeah, my point, my point being those. Storm drains. Were um multi unit. Thirty homes, all of which got flooded, were signed off by an engineer. And they should have been reviewed a lot more carefully, maybe with a second set of eyes before just.
By the city engineers and the civil engineers. I I understand the issue.
Okay.
But as long as it.
Okay, different.
Yeah, outside of the WAS.
Earlier you said stormwater management.
It is in our.
Yeah.
It's one of the criteria.
And site planning.
And so my, the my difference of opinion is that the condition of approval addresses that strongly enough.
So let me.
That's and that can be something we do when we do a motion.
Yes, they go ahead and hear number on stormwater. Go. But I try saying that in different words. Yeah, it's basically, we're just looking at like a preliminary. Is it plausible that they could fix this problem? And if so, then we'll say, go ahead and do your testing and you're in your, you're like really detailed engineering analysis. And you gotta submit that to the planning department.
And if it's, yeah, if it's not feasible, they're finding that and things need to move around, then it.
Yeah.
Would come back to us.
Like, this is just, I see this was just like a really, really early stage of, is this plausible that they can fix this problem? Okay.
But I, we have the other opinion is that if it's that critical, because the site is tight and we have a geologic not survey. And we're on a bluff fifteen feet at least up over the river, that this may affect the actual location, the footprint of the building and any other access points. So we'll move on.
The the engineer himself said we might need to move the.
So I think this would be something where you guys would hopefully have a. An su- a suggestion for in the conditions of approval and how to refine that further. And we can vote on whether or not we think it's clear enough and we'll go through it that way. But I think that's probably the best way to do it, because.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, my opinion is is the condition's clear, but you guys can of course have different opinions. I'm not saying you can't.
So my next question, in addition to the geologic information lacking. Is in our domain in a WAS is tree preservation. We're the ultimate ones on the tree preservation. I know that we've had this in the books for the new tree preservation code. So uh I was looking for a survey and if you could put the landscape plan back up.
Sure.
And I look at the landscape plan, I'm trying to decipher which trees are in the footprint, which ones are in the backyard, which ones are in the excavation area. And I'm having a hard time seeing what they're talking about. And we don't want to defer that again, three months down to some engineer. What are they talking about? What are they preserving? And then also not just where the footprint's gonna be, because there's also backyard in here. But what are they gonna do with the construction equipment that has to get into the site? And we all know how tight sites are and what you gotta do with pre-preservation. So I see some trees in inside the footprint. And a couple, I think, one or two in the yard. And if this is their tree survey, I'm hoping it's accurate. And then what about coming in? Now, if they're not allowed to come in, and again, we're not dealing with the HOA CCRs, that's gonna be a separate issue for them. But if they're gonna come in through that existing right away or easement. May or may not be allowed, but let's say they were allowed by the HOA. How are they gonna blow through these trees in the top of this cliff to get foundations and everything in? That's the question I have. You don't have to answer it, Aaron, because it's not answerable. Uh, okay, pre-protivation. Anybody else?
I'm.
No.
They don't have any comments.
Aaron, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for interrupting, but just to to aid deliberation, Aaron, would you maybe, if you can, flip to the. Maybe multiple slides showing the criteria for the application that might help.
Yeah.
Um, help with discussion.
Sure. Um, so yeah, right now we have the landscape plan up. It shows with red Xs the trees to be removed. And labels some of the other trees as to remain. Um, the. I need to stop sharing the the part of the backup. Be a delay. Full zoom backup. Sorry.
So similar to the drainage plan, the. Actual site plan and tree removal plan would be reviewed again. Uh, relative to the tree preservation code, right?
No, no.
This is it.
If they changed something and removed more trees that were in the WAS, then that would trigger something. The whole going either whether you're doing. Just typical land use or going through the planning commission, it's a gamble, because you're not gonna pay for your, all your consultants and subs and everything to the. To the every, all the.
Right, 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 right.
You get to a point and it's a generally err on the side of caution. And so if they went too early with the stormwater and they can't figure it out, then. Then they have to come back and do it again, or they have to do something that's more expensive than they gotta weigh the cost of doing, doing it that way.
Okay. Scott.
I will.
So I don't know if this, what what if, like, stormwater or whatever. Um. It the, I think we'd all acknowledge there's a tricky lot. It's independent of whether it's WAS or not, right? It's just a tough site to build.
Staging, as John pointed out, it's gonna be fun, but that's not on us.
No, 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 thank God. I understand that. So so a a concern mine. Is. That if it were approved. And there were still open issues in terms of how this would be handled, that would be handled, et cetera. If once they dug into it, it's like, oh, my God. This is gonna cost a fortune. Forget it. But. Site's been cleared.
I don't believe that they can start and I don't know if I can ask the city this. I don't know that they can start clearing trees until they have like a grading for, yeah, grading and drainage permit.
Okay.
That goes under, that goes in like with.
Yeah.
I they, this is not a permit approval to do anything onsite. They would still have to get something to actually move dirt onsite. Thank you. And that involves trees.
Okay, yeah.
My understanding, I don't know if in or.
Yeah.
Correct.
Not nodding my head. Sorry for the delay. I I pulled up the slide um that pertains to tree removal. Those, these are the uh tree removal.
So the only ones that were being removed were the ones that were within the footprint of the house itself and their and their and.
All right.
And that little bit of your yard that weren't.
Oh, wait, they're keeping two in there. Okay.
Yeah, the criteria applicable is trees may be removed where necessary to accommodate and approve development activity. Very general.
Yeah.
Okay. And there isn't anything about trees getting damaged during the construction process because the roots get damaged and the preservation code has requirements for. That, but that. That is the creative permit. So that does, that was my question.
But you can't, you can't dig down that close, or you can't pile up a bunch of dirt and smother the tree.
A perfect example is the post office. I don't know if you've walked by it on um Franklin. But they've got a big tree and they've got two by fours stacked around it because it is close to it and that's a protection measure and that gets. Um, they propose that as part of their plan.
Okay, so that was, that was my question. I thought we had preservation techniques built into the code that would apply, but.
We do. So, so if we are the ultimate, and correct me if I'm wrong, the ultimate reviewers of the tree situation and WAS. Not going back then to the tree preservation code. And the first one is what troubles me the most. So we understand the ones that are coming out for the house. You gotta get them out of the footprint that's, and they're not tons of them, but they're they're coming up. That's fine. It's what's gonna happen to accommodate the approved development activity. And we don't see it. We're not gonna see it.
Right.
And so they could come in and say, we're gonna take the whole forest out from the street over in order to get a a backhoe in there. Trucks, whatever. So that's the concern I have. And I don't know how far that we want to discuss it, but that's a concern I know.
I'm not sure what their, yeah. Tree protection plan would look like for staging, but I do know at least I can only speak from my experience. I don't know what they'll end up doing, but like. When we've had to do some, like, I mean, we have to put up tree protection fencing around. Like even like the construction entrances and like things like that and the arborists. When we would get arborist reports like taken to consideration, heavy equipment driving over tree roads.
Right.
And things like that.
So then hopefully, if we're not seeing it, and the protection, I get that's.
Yeah, yeah.
But they would have to come back to staff unless they don't. And say, we got, we gotta cut a fifteen foot path from the road down to the site in order to dig the foundation and the vault.
So we can make that condition of approval that it needs to be, they need to specify more clearly what trees are gonna be removed.
Kind of like a, on their site, are you saying like on the site plan?
That's what I'm understanding, John's concern. So they could just take out every tree saying, hey, we need to take out every tree because.
Can I interject? And this may be a question for Aaron. Um, staff report recommendation says. Essentially that thirteen existing trees greater than four inches in diameter. In the WAS are shown on the modified landscaping plan, and those are the trees that would be removed if would be approved for removal. Were this application approved, so. Those trees are identified.
Yeah.
It is not a blank check.
There's in there, there's thirteen in the footprint.
Well, in the uh, it's it's a little bit more than the footprint, but yeah. But the trees are identified.
I didn't see them outside the footprint.
Yeah, it's hard to see on their plan. They're. The red Xs are not very large, but uh they're there.
I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
So. Aaron, it is, yeah, I can't, I can't read that.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Thirteen.
Thirteen is somewhere in here.
Yeah, and my question, my my interruption wasn't to say this is right or wrong, but but the but that the trees that would be approved. Removal are identified here and it wouldn't, it doesn't, it is not a blank check to remove more.
So follow up to that. So right, so wi- within the footprint of the building and maybe the patio, whatever, those thirteen trees, Aaron, what about. Moving heavy equipment around to be able to do that work, I would assume that.
They'll figure it out. I and I think when Renee would would.
Well, I'm sorry, Scott, when you say they'll figure it out, what do you mean?
They'll figure out how to do it with that. I think maybe there's a semantic issue. So when Renee was stating the thing about the. Or uh activities of construction. And it's, you have to identify that. It's not, it's not, it's not that you're identifying the trees that you're gonna remove. And then using that part of the sentence to remove more in a further, at a further date, so.
These are the trees that they're saying are necessary to remove to be, to accommodate the development activity.
Yeah, they're saying just these.
That then if that's the case, and we're signing off, those fifteen or whatever, fourteen are in it. Do they come back and say, oh, you know, we're not gonna get approval to go down that easement, so we gotta come in the driveway and we're gonna carry our hammer and saw. And our little bigger shovel by ourselves to get all this done excavated. I can't see that happening on a site this difficult.
Scott, you see, I I share that concern and you guys have more experience doing this. So I get it. Okay. If it's within the footprint, trees have to come out. If they want patio, trees come out. But then all the peripheral, peripheral, peripheral activity to do that construction, that's my concern.
There may be places where they go out there and hand dig. And if that's what they do, that's what they do. I mean, they're not gonna take a backhoe and just.
No, no, so I'm just, again, you guys have more experience. So when you said they'll figure it out, it wasn't, they'll just cut some more trees.
No, 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 they'll figure out how to get around them. Yeah.
Thank you.
They have mitigation measures they use. It gets very expensive, don't worry. And it will turn us away from.
And that's why they want to get to a certain point before they go before the planning commission, so they don't want to have to, because coming back and asking for more. Is probably, is probably gonna cost more in time and money than figuring out how to do it.
All right, so I'm moving along.
Yeah.
This is quick. I understand that our fire department from our deputy chief, the fire marshal. Explained that he just looks at getting a truck to the house to kill that fire right there, and they're not empowered right now to do any kind of uh uh emergency access, okay? So I just want to make sure, because I don't, I know I love my vice chairman over, but I disagree with him. Uh, we should be as a planning commission, looking at ex, uh, you know, emergency escape routes. That's a bigger picture access. So it's great to see.
I want to put up in this, this is an approval criteria. If we have concerns with evacuation routes and how we're doing things like that, that's to be. Brought to the city staff at another time and bringing it up, but this doesn't pertain to what we're talking about tonight.
Everybody knows the different opinions, because it's part of the new goal by the city council. To address comprehensively fire access, fire.
That can be something we request.
Okay, so last but not least. Um. Our job in WAS is to help conserve and protect the river. Both in the tunnel of creek and the river. And so we have been very flexible, I've noticed, and I've been on here now four months, five months. And helping make sure the development works. We're not anti-development, we're not pro-development, at least I am for plan development. So I looked at that canyon again and again, I look at the rim rock, I look at the vegetation, I look at the bluffs. And it's the most natural setting along the river in the whole city. We have an urbanized environment that is not an urbanized environment, that is a natural setting. The rest of the sites that we usually deal with. Are right up on the river, very few veget- uh pieces of vegetation, don't have the cliff or the topo thing that we have here. So to me, our mission is to work and protect the WAS, for lack of a better word, the water lay overlay zone. And when Bob read off that criteria that he did last week, I won't go through all of it. But in the intro, it says, these waterways are valuable economic recreational scenic and natural resources for the community, and they are. The water lay overlay zone is intended to conserve and enhance the natural resource values of areas along both the river and the creek. Now.
What code section this is?
This is the front end of.
Two point seven, it's like six five oh.
And there's like eleven total bullets there that we should be following. The one I really picked out was promoting development that is compatible with the purpose of the water overlay zone. To conserve and enhance the natural resources and looks of these bluffs and these vegetated areas. And so if that isn't clear and objective, I don't know what is. And I know people get hung up and and Ian explained it to me that it's the applicants that challenge it. To me, when I open up this and I'm, you know, uh, have this mission that we have to review it. I see eleven points that we should be following. Those are clear and objective to me. And the big one is, is it compatible with the water overlay zone? And I don't think it is.
It's just part of the perfect, from my understanding, that was part of the purpose, but it wasn't part of the.
Yeah, all on purpose.
Oh, no, I actually can't remember if it came up. The public hearing on this application or some other time recently, but it comes up often. Um. It's not uncommon for somebody, purpose statements are common throughout zoning codes and development codes. Uh, typically, they are not approval criteria that the decision maker can apply unless the code says that they are. So these. Our code generally doesn't work that way. It doesn't incorporate purpose statements wherever they are in the code as approval criteria. So these are. I think it's fair to call them guiding principles. They're sort of the, almost the legislative history in a way of the section of the code, but they're not to be considered approval criteria.
So drilling down though further uh in that section. Uh, excuse me, to the proposal. Uh, excuse me, the Ben, pardon me. Section two point seven point six five O F. Site and design review criteria. So those are criteria, correct?
Yep.
Do you have those on the slide, Aaron?
Yeah.
From the designer review criteria.
I'll just pick up where John was. So in addition to the minimum standards above, that's like above in the code of the gazillion pages. The Bend Urban Planning Commission shall review the development using the following design criteria. One. Conservation of natural features. Major rock outcrops, stands of trees, or apparent areas and other prominent natural features. Are an important part of the visual character and quality of the community. The Bend Urban Area Plan Commission shall review the applicant's proposal. For impacts on these resources and may limit the amount of removal required. Number two, compatibility with existing area. The Bend Urban Area Plan Commission shall consider the relationship of the proposed development with the existing surroundings. In terms of bulk height, location, separation, uh, shade, parking area, blah, blah, blah. So those are criteria, correct?
So in the staff report, it does state, at least for two, that the applicant asserts that this criterion is not clear and objective. Therefore, it doesn't apply. So from earlier, correct me if I'm wrong, if they believe it's not clear and objective and doesn't apply, it's. Out of our purview because then.
No, that's their opinion. That was my question to Ian. Is I'm interpreting the code as it is. And if the state or federal or intergalactic. But we're, and then the applicant. Whatever, if just hypothetically, if if we were to turn this down based on. Not clear and objective, the applicant could go to. Hearing commissioner, this, that, or the other thing.
I think it's straight to Luba on this one. Okay, and a quick question for Aaron. Um, how how, because I don't recall, how how did you address that in the staff? Recommendation that particular.
We pointed out the applicant assert asserted that it's not clear and objective, however. Um, there was enough information provided in the record um, to fi- find if the planning commission wishes. Uh, or agrees that um, the standards are met. So. That's how we handled it.
Look for it, actually looking at it and it looks like. That assertion that it's not clear and objective is in here and. They can, they've also submitted like proposed building materials and colors. That would meet the criteria anyway, so.
No, no. That's, I mean, it's apples and watermelons. I mean, it's put nicely in siding on it. We're talking about the impact of blowing up the side of the. Of the cliff, is what we're saying.
Also, having gone on site, it would be very hard given all the renderings and whatnot. For that. Structure in in my opinion, not to stand out like a sore thumb.
But visual.
Right next to it is a house that's like perched up over a rock. I mean. And 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 I get it too. I mean, to be honest, I'd I'd be great if no houses were on the river. Uh.
I don't have this at my fingertips, but the there was an opponent that submitted a visual simulation of sorts.
And I noticed the yes.
That uh, we we took a photo of that and uploaded it to the record and. I can always run back to my office and grab that.
No, it's okay.
That's the best that we've got.
Right, but this is a three story building. I mean, it's quite significant in in.
The house right next to that one wasn't shown.
So so Scott, have you been out there? Um, yeah, I spent. Walking all around to really, right, because you have a photographer. You know, it's a tricky sight to get your head around. I mean, it. It's, yeah, it's it's a very unique sight, not just in terms of aesthetic beauty, but. It's um.
I wouldn't have a problem if it was up onto the front lawn, if that was appropriate and not the bulk standards, but it's gonna be right there as you come around that curb, as you come into the neighborhood. Sticking out amongst the bedrock and vegetation. The other houses have been in there for many years. And I I just think, what are we doing here? If we're supposed to be watching the was. We're very flexible. We have approved things that were sensible along this corridor. We're not anti-adoption. But I'm for planned development, and this doesn't to me seem to be planned development. And when Bob wrote, read those and I read the other ones in the mission statement. You know, it's is it two plus two plus four or or three plus three is six or whatever? No, but it very clearly telling me. These are the things we as a planning commission and staff and city council should be working. Paying attention to.
Does anyone else here have an issue with the compatibility and the conservation of natural features?
Apart from the fact that I would also prefer that there was no more housing along the river, I.
Does anyone have, yeah, like.
That is, that that is my personal preference when I'm visiting rivers. I don't know that.
Does anyone agree with them that, you know, it doesn't meet? The criteria that the code lays out.
I have a problem with the clear and objective, if preserving the river isn't clear and objective. Uh, what is? Yeah, I thought. I don't, I don't know how we can say it's not clear and objective.
I think they're they're stating what's not clear and objective is the compatibility with the existing area. And one of the reasons they. States because there are homes within the community that are just as bulky, built closer to the river.
That's not true. There are no home that's.
That's what they're stating. I'm just saying what they're stating.
But also they might have been built before this set of criteria were imposed. And so kind of like the buildings that are within the forty foot setback from the river, they're already there. So we can't, we aren't asking anybody to take anything out.
Right. Go ahead and visit it. They're they're smaller, more modest homes, typically one and two story. In. In size. And this is a very contemporary, it's beautiful home. I just don't think it's appropriate in that particular location.
When you slow down. And you look up there, I can barely see a roof, even on the the bigger homes, a roof, maybe a little piece of a house. And then you got the beautiful bluff and the vegetation. So that's what I'm thinking here. This is an intrusion. And it's in our criteria, so I'm having a big problem.
I guess I would like to see just as a citywide thing. Um, and John, this is kinda like what you're talking about with the. The fire code, that type of thing. And by the way, I give my opinion on craft that. And the, you know, criteria and that's. But. I mean, I I kinda see it as like, I if we had a clear and more objective, uh. Development code overlay, for instance, that had some, you know, just some extra things on it that could. Uh, that could help out. I think that would. That would be something I'd be interested in looking at. Doing it kind of piecemeal like. Well, we've, you know, seen a lot of was's before and and I and I. I I just feel like it's one of those things that kinda needs to be more universal. Universally applied along the river.
But don't you think this is a unique spot compared to what we've been working with?
Yes, yeah, oh yeah, it's a lot different than like.
River, they're open yards and one juniper stuck in the middle. I mean, it's not like this. Look at.
Right.
That was a spruce tree, I think.
It was a spruce. A non-native spruce.
So that's the end of my list.
Do you have any, in addition to John's, that you wanna go over?
Well, they they happen to be the second.
No, no, that's great. I'm just, we're just trying to. Yeah, since we've kinda discussed it, um. I don't have anything I wanna deliver. I think we, I've touched on what you guys have spoken on. There's nothing further. Scott?
Nope, I got nothing else.
Everything that was on my list has been discussed.
Nathan?
I mean, my primary. Issue has um. It's with the whether or not the one hundred or forty foot setback applies and I'm. I feel very confident at this point that the intent is to have a forty foot setback. Like the house immediate, both houses immediately adjacent to the property are closer to the river than this particular property. I don't think a hundred foot setback next to like a thirty five foot setback. Like in between two, like. Makes sense, so I do agree with. That, um. In terms of the the stormwater, I. Would need to, for me to reject the application. Because of the stormwater concerns, I would need to feel very confident. That stormwater mitigation was not possible. And I think that there are multiple avenues that seem plausible to me and I'm comfortable. With the condition of approval. Uh, to require all stormwater drainage to be retained on site. Um, I think that if that isn't. Possible, it's not gonna make it through permitting. I'm also. Very cool with adding the additional fifty foot. From the river condition that was suggested. I think that that's a reasonable. Way to. It was mentioned uh, in the the staff, staff mentioned it. Um, from the.
The applicant's final argument. Offers that. As something that they would accept.
Facility would, they'd ensure that it's setback fifty feet.
Is that a already requirement though, or is that?
No.
Forty feet.
Oh, the stormwater specifically.
There's, yeah.
Fifty feet is the repairing corridor boundary. And they're staying out of the repairing corridor boundary with the building and their stormwater design as proposed.
I guess that's all I have to say for now.
Aaron?
Yes, it looks to me like the, I, like, you're like the, my biggest question coming in here were which. Setback applies. Tax law is the county thing. It's not really, it's not a city boundary. Um, so like. Basically, it looks to me like, like. They have met. The criteria to get this approved, like through the, every using every single square inch. Every single line is like to the max. There's no part, you know, there's there's not really parking, the. Not really clear how they're gonna get in and out of that without each other. But that's not. That's not our issue. They can go. Sorry?
There's another stage to this for sure.
Well, yeah.
Potentially.
Still gotta go through the building permit process with when they'll do the the stormwater, additional stormwater. Um. So. All right, I I don't. It it looks like that they're meeting. They're meeting the criteria and to be honest, the way I read that. Design review is more of, um. Allowing the building. That. Allows for conservation of natural features comparatively with existing area. And not a. We have permission to just deny building because we wanna preserve a natural area.
Well, what, what, wait, let's go, can we go back to that? One, that that Aaron was.
Yeah, I mean, the one you just have on the screen.
Do what? Okay, not sure, this one? So here again, site and design review criteria is Bob went into the detail on this, conservation natural features. But we can't review it or we can review it or we're agreeing with it or not agreeing with it. And then a a big three story box that's jammed up the side of the cliff. Is conservation natural features.
Is there a? Natural feature specifically? Like a rock out comping or something.
Rock out dropping, heavy forested vegetation. The river rock, the river going through, the wetlands, the the whole canyon, and it's called that as a canyon and a, uh, not bluff, but the.
Is the building within?
Yeah.
In those areas or are they setback from it?
They're setback, but they're in the view of that corridor. And he just, and Aaron, our our planner, Aaron just said, it's a scenic. And there's a separate approval process that they have to go through. With the Oregon parks and recreation. So this will be submitted to them. Nice. And they haven't signed off on it yet, right? That's correct. And so we're recommending a condition of approval that that approval be provided prior to building permit.
And will the publicity informed of that?
They have, that agency has their own uh, review process. I don't know what uh, if any public. Um. Opportunities for public input in their reviews. But what's odd about that? Is that then we're gonna kick it up to them to review what we should be doing, conservation, natural features, view quarters, scenic quarters. What are we doing here then? Why are we even watching the was?
Yeah, some communities don't have a waterway or relay zone.
But if it's good, let's do it.
This is under, this is under the review process, I think, though. This is under the state agency coord. Coordination and that's what the condition is tied to.
Yeah. We we notified them. That this application was being reviewed locally, but the applicant must then submit similar information. To the state agency for its review.
So then if I got this right, if this is the case with scenic waterway, we're having the state review it.
It's a, it's. It's it's an overlapping review.
Whatever the group, then conservation, natural resources and all these things Bob just read and all the things I was looking at. Why do we haven't been there? If we can't use it, if they're not criteria for us.
Stating it another way, I mean, it's in our code. If the state thinks it's important enough to review it. I don't think it should just be a little checkbox like, you know, is it a two thousand square foot home, no subjective. Um, you know, to me. What? This this isn't a spreadsheet analysis.
No, and I think not. Disagreeing with that, I just. Trying to go off of what we do have in our code. Cause that's, once again, in reference to the state, and then if we go to ours, there is. The site design and review criteria under the was, and that's what we review it under. And I. I personally am comfortable. With the application, knowing and with the condition written and that they have to go through an additional review with the state. Because, and we're personally, I think we're outside of all the setback requirements from all these areas of special interest on the property. I don't think that there's anything else that I can say other than they met the requirements and that's my personal opinion.
No, I I get it. Let's buy the metrics. It it all.
So I think.
Check the boxes.
Exactly. I mean, so so the the perfect, you know, so we have like a purpose and then we have, the code gives us. Criteria to meet that and unfortunately. Not every property is the same, and so some of them we like better than others and.
Well, and also.
That that's just the problem with having to come up. Clear and objective code is it doesn't apply.
But that's why, again, the purpose is all these lofty terms, right? But. Then drilling down criteria. The two criteria that I read off. Conservation of natural features, major uh, the. In addition to the minimum standards above, what I call the spreadsheet that check the boxes stuff. The Bend Urban Planning Commission shall review the development using the following design criteria. Conservation of natural features, major rock out crops, stands of trees, or apparent areas. Or other prominent natural features are an important part of the vis- visual character and quality of the community. Then the plan commission shall review the applicant's proposal for impacts on these resources and may limit. The amount of removal required. Number two, compatibility with existing areas, plan, commission shall consider relationship with the proposed development. With the existing surroundings in terms of building bulk height, location, et cetera, et cetera, so. That those, those are subjective. And I'm saying that the code gives us the latitude. To. Render judgment.
What are you suggesting then?
Yeah.
We need a suggestion. I guess like.
Well, right now I would deny this.
So you wanna deny the application. You wanna delight, deny the application. Under criteria two point seven six fifty F. For the conservation of natural features, because it cuts down thirteen trees.
No, because of the visual impact on that whole corridor. The the. So I've been out for a year and I've kinda wondered why we have these p. Excuse me, these piddly applications coming in front of us. Where it's like they wanna go from a one story, a two story, everything else is two story, but it's a very urban. Straightforward, but it's on the river. So we're, you know, we waste an hour or two and and we don't, we're not preserving a damn thing. Here, this is a beautiful, natural setting. That yes, has homes in it, but there it's su- it's subtle. This to me is is glaring. It's a beautiful home. I'd love to have that home. I wouldn't feel right doing that to to my neighbors and and the Bend community. It's very clear. I wouldn't feel right doing that to to my neighbors and and the then community, it's very clear. What the laws is designed for, and they gave us the fricking criteria, and I'm gonna stick to it.
Okay, does anyone have, I think we've talked in circles a bit now, does anyone have a motion they'd like to suggest?
But I would be open to. Condition of approval, come back with a scaled down design. That visually. Has. Is less egregious.
So.
That's gonna be a tough thing to approve.
Yeah.
If you don't like this project as presented, if you have a basis to deny, then. Proceed and convince your colleagues that that's the thing to do.
Yeah, alright.
I'll make a motion to deny. PLDR twenty twenty four zero two one three.
Second.
Okay, we I guess we can go ahead and vote on that. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All those opposed?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, anyone else like to make a suggested motion?
I move to approve the waterway overlay zone application, PLDR two zero two four zero two one three. For a second detached, single unit dwelling at six five nine Northwest Silverbuckle. Based on the findings and subject to the conditions recommended by staff.
I'll second.
Okay. Did you want to make that amendment for the fifty foot?
You go ahead and vote on. I believe the processes, we go ahead and vote on that and this.
It's been moved and seconded, so if anyone wants to move to amend, they.
Does anyone? Anyone like to make an amendment?
Well, I would move to amend the string. But number, the third condition of approval, that the stormwater drainage needs to meet the same fifty foot. Is destructive.
I would second that, second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on the. First motion of the approval of the waterlay over zone. Is that correct?
I think now voting, voting the motion to amend, yeah.
Okay. Let's vote on the amendment for the fifty foot setback for stormwater for condition number three. Um. Is there, I think for specific verage, let me pull up the condition.
The Aaron has it on the screen too.
Oh, thank you. The inside's a little bit in the way. Um, okay. Okay. Just adding fifty foot setback at some point.
Yeah, we could.
Okay, alright, great, all those. In favor?
Hi.
Hi. All those opposed? Okay, and then we will go ahead and vote on the approval. Of the or the suggested motion with the amendment. All those in favor?
Hi.
Five. All those opposed? Three, four, three.
Good.
Okay. We're done? Thank you, Aaron. Alright, next we will go ahead and move into approval of minutes. Um, I was not at this meeting, but if anyone has, we'll go down the line, if you can just say. If you have any, or if you approve on, we'll start that. Prove.
No problem.
Sure.
Okay. Alright, next we will go to communications, reports from planning commissioners. John, do you have anything?
No.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Okay, I got, yes, um, the Summit West Neighborhood District is having their annual meeting, forgotten the date, maybe. June fourth, June sixth, and um, plant commission has been asked to. Um, have a table, they're gonna have other departments from the city there, so they asked if John and I. Uh, could do that, so we said yes, if everyone's cool with that.
I don't have any issues.
June third or fourth, sorry.
June third or fourth, and I've also asked uh Colin, um Renee. Or and Pauline, but apparently you guys have a conflict, did you?
June fourth is a city council meeting, and we have several items on that agenda, so but Colin, Pauline and I will all be. At council for different items that.
We might ask for.
We could, yeah.
Okay.
We'll keep talking about that.
Thank you. You gotta come up with something better than row houses. Not clear and objective.
The UK, like I feel like. The really common like attached homes. You know what I mean, I mean, I don't think they're, I know they call homes flats, but there's like a. It's a really standard to have, you know, like our townhomes and row homes.
Scott was looking that up.
A pie house, sometimes they're called pie houses.
I should know this, I watch lots of British.
A pie house, Deerfield Pie House, uh it's a two-story house located in Deerfield, Illinois, apparently there's an example maybe for an Illinoisan. Um, yeah, sometimes called a pie house or a skinny house, a pie house.
We did call them skinny homes in Seattle. It's better than row.
Cause there's.
Um, I do have a request that at some point when we have a free day. Or a free, a very small agenda that we kind of go through the bylaws.
Oh, use it to my ears.
We haven't done that in a while.
Yeah.
I'll look for that.
And then Renee, I do have, I have a trip coming up in June. Early July that I'll connect with you on on date.
Okay.
Great. Thanks.
I just wanna say good job, Margot, uh keeping us like. Yeah, that was good, that was good, I think, uh, yeah, no, for a good deliberation and making everything clear and. Clear objective in the just deliberation, I think, uh, yeah, I like.
I don't wanna hang out with you guys all night, but I don't wanna hang out with you guys all night.
Uh, Scott and I attended a workshop about uh redevelopment potential. Uh, from a speaker, no, it was oh, it was from Building a Better Bend, it was a speaker from Atlanta. Who was specialized in uh infill development and uh.
There's a shotgun of information.
It was, it was, it was like fire hose of information, uh, and it didn't really, like, she wasn't from here, so I thought, well, we have like. The old mill district, that's kind of good infill development, uh although. I don't know if anybody else was here when the mill was still here, cause I was. Um. Uh, or uh OSU Cascades on the demolition landfills, I thought we had some good examples, but. They, she was talking a lot about things like uh strip malls, uh.
We.
Uh, pointed out that the old Costco site is the same footprint as all of downtown Bend. And so there could be a lot of different things built there besides.
Wow, that's wild.
Yeah, yeah.
Our, our downtown is super small.
It is, I think it depends how you, if you define downtown as between Franklin and Greenwood.
Exactly. I mean, but that is.
But still, if you define others as downtown.
It was very interesting, and uh I think there's some real potential, and as she didn't know about the. Core area, I think we have a lot of of that kind of development happening here. Uh, but some of the strip mall stuff was kind of intriguing to see what's been done.
Brought that up, we worked on some projects that had been built in the sixties and seventies, and they had six cars per thousand for retail. And these parking lots were huge, and even on the day after Thanksgiving, they were full.
Yeah.
And you could infill and add in there, and I've noticed that in a couple of these lots of the older malls and things, it was just like, wow, did they ever get filled, could they do so also?
Right, right, and just the life expectancy of those buildings is pretty short considering, right? So anyway, it was, it was interesting to see examples from other places where.
Both just happened to attend that or.
Yeah, she gave me a heads up, and then I usually try and attend those kind of things, do they record them?
It it was recorded.
I would definitely check it out, cause I was just, I kept imagining Third Street.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking about as well.
Do you guys, was that a city?
No, it was, it was the chambers.
Building a better bed.
Yeah, building, they do speaker series, and I wasn't able to go to that one, but they they advertise them pretty well, I'd say. Usually find out about them on some listserv email.
Not being so for me is really not.
Nathan or Aaron?
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry you got chased down, I'm sorry.
It happens to me all the time. So the one thing I kind of wanted to to talk about in this space of time where I'm allowed to talk about things. Um, is that I would. I kind of feel like this particular application and. I've kind of noticed this in some of our previous applications, I really feel like. The waterway overlay zone part of the development code could really use. Like some scrutiny.
We're on it.
Yeah.
On our work plan.
Awesome, specifically section two point seven, six fifty F, um. I would really like to see a. Code that gives us more. Strong ways to protect our waterway, I think that there's. Like, especially in this particular. This particular application that. Was something that I was really looking for in the code, especially I was really looking for something that I could point to. That wouldn't be like. Dismissed and lubed in three seconds, you know what I mean, um? And I wholeheartedly agree.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
I do too. I wish I could.
So we don't talk about it too much, we, this is on our work plan to, uh, the waterway overlay zone has been updated in bits and pieces over the years. We have not taken a holistic look at it, we will be. Later this calendar year, and so that as a development code amendment will be coming to the plan commission, so you will.
Fantastic, that makes me very happy. Um. That's, that's really all I had.
I'm excited to hear that, cause I thought you just wanted to rip up the corridor.
I would have. I'm like him, I couldn't find anything that.
Well, it probably will be shot down, but I, you know, that's why I asked.
I I I feel the same, like I I would love to. Say no to that project, I just. Felt like they actually were meeting all the criteria, and so I didn't really have anything I could say.
I mean, not to encourage.
I think we wanna guys kind of avoid talking about. So Aaron, do you have anything?
Um, well, I was feeling the same about the waterway, um, and then. Well, I think this. Something about fire keeps coming up on every.
Right.
Project. Wonder if we shouldn't have.
Unfortunately, I don't know if that falls under the fire department, which falls out of us.
Okay, and and I and I don't.
I know, I'm just asking, I don't know.
I don't mean fire code, but um.
Emergency management.
Evacuation rounds.
Maybe like more more, yeah, may maybe. Is there, is there something that the city we, that as a planning, we could, we could ask the city to take a look at? Are we? Do we need an emergency management?
I don't know if that would fall under like the transportation planning and.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot to talk about, I mean, one. City does have very, very intense emergency management function that is relatively new, but um. Is highly resourced, the council just adopted our new.
Goal.
Kind of, well, other than that, uh, we, they haven't formally adopted all their goals yet, but the council adopted at the meeting last week are. Essentially rewritten from the ground up emergency operations plan, um spearheaded by our emergency management team, so the city does a lot of emergency management. I, I'll be honest, I think people want things that are very hard to deliver now in terms of certainty about what to do and where to go. When a hypothetical future fire crops up and for better or worse, fires can come from anywhere. Um, so it is highly situational, and I will also say, this is, I'm not an expert, and I know things move really quickly. But if people are paying attention, they're gonna have more than five minutes to leave, right, when a fire starts, so um I. The city does a lot, um, the council is adopting wildfire planning and resiliency into their goal framework. I think some of that, and again, this is in the, for the twenty five to twenty seven biennium. I think some of that is probably going to encompass how we. To a greater degree incorporate all aspects of wildfire preparedness, resiliency. Ingress, egress into our planning, uh, not to say that it's not now, but I think, I think that effort is is. It's underway, I don't, so I don't think the planning commission needs to ask for anything in particular because it's already happening.
So with that. Ian, within six months or a year, but Ian Renee, do you foresee when we get an application? That there will be some new criteria with some new review, for example, I can't remember of the. The development on the south where we. Hey, we've. You know, and and the uh. The comment at the the time, I think from the fire department was, well, essentially we can get a fire truck in to put out a house fire. But we were asking the broader question, I don't wanna have to ask things outside of our scope, I want it to be clearly defined within our scope. And some experts have already offered their opinion versus stuff coming to us where nobody's really looked at it through that lens.
I I think those questions are going to be asked over the next couple of years, including how the development code might change to incorporate that. I will say, I think there is some tension, there is going to be some tension between we're. Planning for and or requiring what you you know, I'll say road capacity that is probably never gonna get used. But in a certain hypothetical situation, might, somebody might think it's needed, I think it's gonna be really interesting to see how that goes. But yeah, this is, this is a, this, this is, these are analyses, and I think. There's thinking that's gonna come on whether that should be incorporated into development standards and planning differently than it is now, which is not to say that it isn't. But um, I think we're gonna be looking at that.
Where can, just so, you know, cause it sounds like there's already information out there and we're being done, where can that be found?
I think the next, I think the next thing to, one of the next things to tune into, I think at the May twenty first council meeting, we're gonna be doing an update on the. Sort of the developing council goal framework, I think that's during the work session, but I'm not certain, so. Um, more, more information on the latest as to how council goals as a whole, not just related to wildfire. Are shaping up, um, is gonna be discussed at the May twenty first council meeting, so tune in there.
We find like, just like the emergency management, cause I even look, I forgot that a lot of departments have it.
Emergency preparedness on the city's website, and then there's quite a few links.
Great, thank you.
Uh, that take you to some different topics from there.
So Ian, if I got you right, cause we all were, as Aaron and others have said, we've been talking about this, and if I got this right. Some of the lobbying that's going on with the council was to take a comprehensive look, and my gut feeling is I don't think we need six inches of study in sixteen years to get it done. And so if I got this right, somebody somehow, some way, and it's probably gonna fall in Renee's lap and the emergency management's lap. Uh, look at the code, what do we have in there or don't have in there, cause I still see landscaping stuffs being done by the builders, putting trees under the windows and bushes and all that. Two, you know, what are the educational lobbying things that we need to get out there to the people to say, you should clean up your stuff? And three is the emergency uh uh escape, the, you know, the routes.
Yeah.
So for example, we had emergency management telling our neighborhood district, who Bob's in mind, here are the routes to get out of our neighborhood. One wasn't finished, we had to then call in and send a note to the planners, you think they could push developers to to connect that route, even if it's gravel for the next couple of years? But the one hand and the other hand wasn't working, we wouldn't have to ask most of this stuff if it was cleaned up in the code. And then I have two more things related to that, I got a flyer, and I think my neighbor's got a flyer about, oh, fire wise, watch what's going on, all that. My uh banker, she got one and said, you better clear out your house and clean this out, do this, or you're gonna get fined seven hundred fifty dollars a day regarding fire. So. We have some stuff on the books that I'm not clear, and I don't think most people are clear, what are we doing? And maybe that's the whole mission, the goal is, let's get this going in a comprehensive way. Those sound like two different situations, I mean, seeing it show up in the mail, um, one sounds like a potential code enforcement situation. The other sounds like general preparedness, encouragement and information, those are very different things, um. Uh, we do have things in our code, in our development code and elsewhere about responsibilities people have to for. For one, uh, keep flammable vegetation on properties they own and control, so we do, these are existing things that the city has. Monitored and regulated for years. Um, that sounds a little bit like the letter that your banker got, but I don't know.
What is that, complaint driven enforcement?
Sometimes, sometimes, um. You know, if a code enforcement person is out and they see a life safety situation, they don't have to ignore it and wait for a complaint to come in, but it's often. But it's often complaint driven.
So some things are on the books, it's just a matter, are we gapped or whatever, cuz I think Renee or somebody told me that. Sisters and the state are coming up with a model code, I think, systems is way ahead of us on that. Easier, and if this is a check mark for us, say, yeah, okay, you don't have to build a six-lane highway, but where, how are you gonna get out of here? And and to the council's credit, they followed our recommendations, said now make it permanent, that's just.
I might just say that we moved to. But yeah, I think these are great conversations, but. I'm not sure that we need to keep doing it.
But yeah, it's coming, it's coming.
Great, thank you, um, Renee.
Sure, um, so, planning manager report, um, your next meeting will be canceled, that's Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty sixth. Um, we will have a meeting on June ninth, we have two items queuing up for that meeting and um.
What are they?
It'll be another waterway overlay zone application, it's time for the Columbia Park River Access, so BPRD project. And then a package of amendments to our sign code. Um, so those are the two.
That's sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay, those are the two items.
And the Columbia, that's the uh construction going on?
Um, and then various other code amendments uh for later in June and July probably. So that's it. That's it for me.
Yeah, I'm a maybe for June nine.
Um, I'll be short and not talk about the application you decided tonight, but just a pep talk, um, four or three votes are okay, they're probably even good sometimes, um. Don't, I I know none of you feel bad about not agreeing, but this group is, I think, pretty accustomed to having a lot of agreement. On a lot of applications, it's not always gonna happen, I think that's not a bad thing, and it was a good deliberation tonight.
I'll, I'll just add a comment, cuz I. I I felt good, I'm glad Ian, you made that point at the end, I think in spirit, we were all on the same page, it was just. Given how the code's written, given Luba, you know, do we, you know. Make a gesture, it's probably gonna get shot down, I said yes, and you guys said no. At the end of the day, it's probably not gonna, it's all gonna end up in safe place, so.
Thank you, Jack, good work, everybody.